Now we'll have a presentation about the Safety Response Protocol from our Dennis Yarmouth School Resource Officers, which is part of Superintendent Goal Five District and School Safety Planning. Hit the green button on the microphone. Push button.
Now I'm on?
You're on.
I knew, I knew I should ask. Thank you. Good evening to the board, Superintendent. Folks at home, ships at sea. I'm Nick Pasquerosa. I am your Yarmouth Police School Resource Officer. I'm assigned full-time to Dennis Yarmouth Regional High School. I'm here with Sean Brewer, who with his partner Finley is assigned here at the Intermediate Middle School. My partner at the high school from the Dennis Police, John Tibbetts, was detained unfortunately. So it is America's School Safety Week. We're very happy to come to speak to the board and to the public about what we've been doing. I want to tell you upfront that we are not doing things just this week. We're simply using this opportunity to report out about some stuff that we've been working on for awhile. So these are things that were on the drawing board and I think that we're in a very fortunate place recently that some dominos are starting to fall in our favor, which in government doesn't happen all that often. So this is sort of an exciting time and we're happy to report out on it. I'm going to start with talking about our very robust emergency management plan, which we developed in-house. That plan, we developed on our own, starting in 1996 and we've been updating it every year since then. Every time an incident pops up of school violence, we superimpose that plan over what would have worked or would not have worked in that incident and we really feel strongly that our plan holds up really, really well. And now we're going to change it. So let me explain to you why. Let me first say that we're feeling very vindicated that the plan is good. Sean and I went to a seminar where we saw a presentation on the "I Love You Guys" Standard Response Protocol and I kept nudging Sean saying, "Does this look familiar to you? Does this look familiar to you?" He's like, "Yeah, it does." I think, I said, "I think they stole our stuff," which they didn't do. Independent thinking and parallel thinking brought us to the same conclusion. The "I Love You Guys" Standard Response Protocol, I'm in charge of the slides, aren't I? Look at that. That's all of us and when you've been around as long as I have, you can be a cartoon character too. That's about our plan. So why are we making the change? Anyway, I said to Sean, "This looks like our stuff and this would be a very easy transition for us to make." If our plan's so good, and it is, why would we make a change? Because there's not, not really an operational change to how we're doing things. What happened was, there was an incident in 2016 in Platte Canyon, which is in Bailey, Colorado, 2006. There was a school invasion, hostage situation, and Emily Keys, who was a 16-year-old student there, was killed. Her parents, John, Michael, and Emily Keys started a foundation in their name and as far as I understand, weren't really sure what to do with the foundation, but received a lot of donations from the community to support them. And what they discovered that in Colorado, where Columbine had happened in 1999, there was a regulation passed by legislature that said every school needs to have a plan, but gave them no guidance on what to put in the plan. That was true here, too. We have no legislative guidance. We had to make ours up. So in 2006, after the Platte Canyon incident, seven years after the Columbine incident, there still was no template to follow in Colorado, the hub of school violence response. So they put together some experts who were drawn into them from the incident and from tragedy and they developed this plan, which very closely mirrors ours, which means with all the expertise that they could bring to bear and all the resources that they had to research 550 incidents, we came to the same conclusions that they did. Now, they're a much higher, much higher-profile organization than the D.Y. Police Services Unit. And so, a lot of folks got behind them and the "I Love You Guys," which is the name of the foundation based on Emily's last text to her parents. That foundation is now internationally known and a lot of stuff comes from that that we don't, we can't enjoy in our little pond, if you will. So the Standard Response Protocol was developed in Colorado. It's spread across the country. We're adopting it. We have adopted it. It's done. We've adopted it. And, hmm. I'm getting ahead of my notes. I apologize. Sorry about that at home. I'm way ahead of my notes. I'm trying to be efficient in time. So by adopting this, for our personnel and our kids, the change in what we've been doing for years is tiny. So we're not asking them to do anything different. Our response is still good. It's the same. It's the same as they came up with after all their research. We get to use their stuff. The posters, the videos, the slide shows. When they update it, which they do very gingerly after great thought and consideration, they don't change it lightly, we will enjoy those changes. There's, we will get the manual and this has cost us an email from Dr. Smith to Colorado. That's the cost. We printed out some posters for the classrooms. We've been using the videos. Some of those videos are public safety facing. We've used those videos to train our patrol officers on both sides of the river, our dispatchers, and the fire department is distributing those to their personnel so everyone knows what we're doing with the Standard Response Protocol. This gives us a substantial amount of sustainability so that we don't have to continue to make it up as we go. We don't have to depend on our own research, our own comparatives. We can use their stuff and then we can concentrate on other things. We don't have to spend time updating handouts. It's all sort of done and we don't have to change what we're doing because what we're doing is quite correct. This is actually what you're seeing on the screen here is the poster that's hanging in classrooms. It's very succinct. I can tell you that for years we've struggled with how to properly distribute this to the faculty and staff because there was, these things go through fags. Flip charts, like a calendar, and then there was little books and one-page handouts. It's all done. It's done for us. All this stuff is available. Anybody can look at it. It's the iloveyouguys.org website has all of these things. This is where we got it. It's, and it's in employment right now in the district. We have completed staff training. We have completed student training as I stand here. It's done. It's in place. And now all we have to do is practice it. On top of the fact that "I Love You Guys" is an international, internationally recognized program, it's in alignment with the Commonwealth's new curriculum for first responders to active shooter incidents. The governor decided to subscribe to a program developed at the University of Texas State University, I keep saying that wrong, Texas State University, the Advanced Law Enforcement Rapid Response Training. The Municipal Police Training Committee started training that in July to all new recruit officers and over the next six years, all police officers, firefighters, and EMS people will be trained in the Joint Response Protocols, which is something we've already been doing locally and what we did in training very closely mirrors the alert stuff. And now locally, we have alert instructors who will carry that forward. So we're in alignment with what's going on out there in the world. One of the important things that we're going to be enhancing, oh, here we go. It got away from me. How do I back it up? Oh, too far. Come back, come back, come back. I'm giving it all away. This is very sensitive. Alright, pretend you didn't see any of that. Okay. Alright. So I want to run you really, through it really quick. In the spirit of keeping it simple, which is one of the things we really like about the SRP, there are five things that we need teachers to do. We don't want this overly complicated. The flip chart would tell you how to apply a Band-Aid and how to evacuate the building. These are the five things that we want teachers and students to know how to do. Hold, secure, lockdown, evacuate, and shelter. Now, it's a little more complicated than what we had because we had only three things. We had lockdown, we had evacuate, and we had shelter in place. Now, this actually, I really like it because it breaks shelter in place into three things and makes us a little more agile, which is a good thing and they're not difficult to understand. And again, all the icons match and on the posters and they're very simple. So to run you through it really quick, what's a hold? Well, if somebody makes a mess in the hallway and we don't want people trudging through it, the hold puts people in classroom spaces and it clears the hallways and it allows us to do what we need to do to get that mess cleaned up. Whether it's some sort of spill that we don't want tracked all over the place or if we were to have a medical incident and we needed to get some stretchers and some EMS people in without trying to move through passing time. We can move freely and give somebody a little bit of privacy and a little bit of dignity. Secure is when the problem exists outside of the school building and we bring everyone in and lock all the doors. Now, when I say lock all the doors, that's the prescribed thing that you do. Our doors are already locked. We just need to bring everybody in. The doors remain locked. We're a little heightened vigilance. No one comes or goes until we have a handle on the problem. So there's a lot of different reasons we might employ that. Crime that's somewhere near the school, up the street maybe, in the business area on Station Avenue, some sort of crime that we might feel might affect the schools, we would secure, everyone comes inside, we wait until somebody says that's all sorted out and then we can go back to our, to what we're doing. For, you know, for some period of time, nobody comes in, nobody comes out. I'll come back to that later. Lockdown for us, that's a problem of some sort of violence or some problem inside the building. Our response there is no change at all. It's what we've been doing the whole time. Evacuation is evacuation. There's some nuance to that, but not a lot and not new stuff for us. So we've got mass evacuation, self-evacuation, escorted evacuation, all of those things come into that. And now shelter becomes something for a higher-tier emergency like a tornado. So we would announce that we were sheltering in place, give a direction on where that shelter will take place, in the classroom, in the hallway, in the gym. Someone would choose what's the best response to that emergency and then we would move into the shelter phase. The details that we give to the teachers, we spent an hour with them covering all of this and all of the questions they might possibly ask. The kid's got a very abbreviated version of that that is compatible with their attention span and so the training on this is done and it's just a matter of refreshing it as we go. One of the things that we're, communication with parents is a part of this. The SRP is like, "Nope, we gotta engage the parents," which was not something we were ever opposed to. There's some language in the manual about how that would be managed. There's some nuance to that we're going to put on it that we're not going to call home for everything, but we're going to call, if we need to clear the hallway for five minutes, that's not a call home because we don't want to panic everybody. But for the other things, we certainly would. And so there's some protocols for managing that effectively that we're going to be following. So communication with parents, of course, is paramount. We need folks to know what, what's going on and what we need them to do. What do we want them to do? Not this. This is an actual scene and this is really a problem. And I don't mind telling you that sometimes public safety creates this problem, although I couldn't find a photo of that to show you. Clogging the roads hinders response and everyone's first inclination to rush to the school to their children is completely understandable, but also puts us in a position where we're working through that as, in contending with crowds showing up and trying to sort through who's who and what needs to get done and it can end up with misallocation of resources. It can end up with us not being able to reach the scene with the appropriate resources and assets that we need. So most of the guidance in the manual is, "Please don't come to school. We'll tell you when we need you to come or where we need you to go and how we will return your children to." Because we're not, we want you to have your kids back at the right time. So that might not be the fastest time, but we need to do it right, not fast. And there's a lot of other things that we need to tees to cross and eyes to dot before we take the kids from places where they're relatively safe to move them out into the open to do that reunification. So we're going to do all of those things. So coming to the school is not the first best plan, but it might be the first best inclination and we would ask people to resist it and wait for the communication and then help us out. So when I talk about dominos falling in our favor, adoption of the SRP puts us in alignment with the state response curriculum. We were in alignment with that anyway with the old plan, but now it's official. When we talk to the guys who come up from Texas, "Hey, do you know I love you guys?" It's like, yes, we do and that, we know it's not, they're talking about the foundation and not something else. The, and it, they're excited to say, "Well, we're compatible with that." And now we're excited to say, "We're compatible with all of that." This also gives us an opportunity where it's such a widespread program to leverage some technology that's been built around the Standard Response Protocol. So the icons we've shown you, you can see on the screen here on the cellphone, match that. So this gives us an opportunity to start to move away from pencil and paper solutions for student accountability and alerting each other with P.A. systems and some of the other archaic things that we find ourselves doing in some of the older school buildings and using smart technology to get the word out that we're responding to an emergency so that everybody knows what they're supposed to do and it's easy to look. It's like, "Oh, that's the, that's the, that's the secure symbol. I know what I'm supposed to do. It's right here on my poster next to my desk and it all comes together." So that's something that's happening. Dr. Smith has authorized the purchase of the software. We have a timetable for rolling that out. I was in a big hurry and wanted it done when we opened and somebody talked me off the ledge and said that might not be the best. Again, do it right, not do it fast. And I buy that. I'm good with that. There was a lot of technical stuff. So we're about to start figuring out what we need to do. We have a meeting end of the month with the company about what we need to do and get ready for and then there's going to be some technical meshing of databases so that we can leverage the system to do our student accounting on the phone instead of yelling at each other over radios or holding cards up and using hand signals around the building. We can use the technology to get this stuff done in moments. So that, that will be a handful of months to get that set up, to get it tested, to get us tested with it, do some tabletop exercises and then have it up and running and trying it out during fire drills is the goal before we're, before we're done for the year. As soon as we can do that practically. So that's happening. The other thing that lets us do is we can integrate the Raptor notification system with our access control system. So by doing the notifications in the phone and alerting everyone, the access control system can react to that and we can set alert levels in the, in the system to lock out certain cards. So if a card became compromised or someone was coming into work at a, not the start time of school, we have some employees that sort of go between schools or they have an abbreviated date, they come in at a later time, they're not walking into an incident because they didn't get the word. They should get the word on their phone and then they should be locked out of the building if we're having a lockdown so they don't end up introducing themselves into the scene in the middle of it in an unprotected fashion. So that, again, the dominos fall a little bit, so there's a lot of stuff happening. But these are the things that are happening. And they've, some of these things have been on the drawing board for quite some time. The safety committee that's been meeting monthly since Dr. Smith put it together, we're kind of taking off now and getting some stuff done. So it's really exciting to report out on this. The other thing that we're doing is we're putting back the band, putting the band back together, if you will. So the Adopt a School is one of those trendy things that we put together with some grant money a long time ago, circa 2000. That's the, that's the, there's some late grades in that picture and I'm happy to say there's at least two of us that are still working. Gordon Gibbons on the right side there, still, still around. And Kevin Deppin was on the other side of the river when we took the picture. So there's three of us still working when we had Adopt a School. The new regulations around certification for school resource officers from the Municipal Police Training Committee and the Police Officer Standards and Training Commission are pricey and the chief's commitment to having somebody in the schools where we have full-time SROs even when some of us have to be reassigned for various reasons. We have nine standby officers, certified substitutes. So when one of us is out, they get the nod and they come in, they spend the day in the school. They have to be certified for that. We can't just pick somebody off the day watch who says, "Hey, it'd be great to be with the kids for a day." They have to be certified if they're going to be in the school. So we have nine people and some of them have already adopted schools. They've already found ownership in some of the elementary schools and they're already doing it. So again, I can't say this costs nothing because it cost us a week of training, two days of in-service training for those guys to maintain their certification, but they're already out there and they're already engaging with the schools. So we're going to hang a label on it and give them credit for what they're doing and recognize that we've got a more robust police presence in and around the schools than it might appear to have. And I don't know if we'll ever get together to take another photo like this. I won't look like that, though. It'll be, it'll be a new photo. New cast of characters, that's a fact. And here's how we've assigned it. Alex Exaros, who was assigned here full-time last year, is the, assigned here to the Intermediate Middle School. Samantha Voltweeny, our backup Adopt a School Officer at the high school. Phil Sullivan's going to handle Baker. Jason Bernardo will be handling Small School. Jefferson Willis is already all over Station Avenue Elementary. He's in there all the time. And Lieutenant Crowe Borden, who's the unit commander on the Armistide, is going to handle St. Pius himself. So like I say, they're already doing it. Credit where credit's due for the initiative and all of these officers and several more on the Dennis side who didn't make the list as an Adopt a School Officer necessarily will continue to fill in for us and we will continue to work hand in hand watching over the schools. To round out the week and a little more than the week, as we were aware, we weren't going to get all the ground-level meetings done this week. But we launched the Initiative for Safe Schools Week and we have several appearances at the PAC meetings or the PTO meetings, however they call it, at the individual schools. So tomorrow night, I'm going to be appearing at Station Avenue Elementary at 6:00 with a similar presentation with some more detail in it. October, Wednesday, John's going to go over to Marguerite Small and I will be at St. Pius. The Marguerite Small appearance is at 4:30 and the St. Pius School is at 5:30. They clearly fall under our umbrella. They're on the Station Avenue corridor and we're doing what we can to cooperate because that only benefits everybody. Thursday night is the high school. John and I will be at the high school. Wednesday, November 20th, D.Y. Intermediate School, Sean and Finley will be handling that. And we don't, we didn't, John was going to lock in a date with Mr. Deppin on Baker. John's been detained, as I think you can imagine, with some other things and so that, I didn't end up with that date for the meeting tonight, but Baker is on the list of places we're going to go. So we will get that out and we'll post that on our website and the folks at Baker will get that out to their parents as soon as we've figured out what the date's going to be. So much of this information is on our website, which we just relaunched, at www.dypd.us, D.Y. Police Detachment, dypd.us. There's a lot of stuff on there. It's not everything, but it's a lot of stuff. So if you're looking for some stuff on the SRP or the meeting schedule or anything else about our mission, there's a lot of stuff up there for kids to do research projects on civics and law enforcement, criminal justice, and a lot of information about our mission. That is the presentation. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. Sean, anyone there? The dog? Anybody want to talk? Just checking in, Sean.
Thank you so much. Mr. Morris.
My question would be, how can you expect somebody like me, who has watched you and the whole police staff do great things, come up with innovative ideas, before we even know there's a problem, you've solved it? This has been going on since the very first day that Steve Exaros took the reins at the high school. So we can't be surprised. You're, we're blessed because we get good people doing good things right from the get-go. Thanks.
Thank you. March 8th, 1987. March 9th, 1987 was when Steve Exaros started. That's the Monday. So we've been watching over the high school, particularly with the district, since then. 38 years.
Boy, does that make me feel old since I was the head of the High School Parents Council.
Mr. Glenn.
Thank you, Officer Pasquerosa. It's no surprise, and just piggybacking on what Phil was just saying, I think we already know that you guys are leaders in this area and I hope we are one of the key dominos here. Not only is the superintendent the objective and he has done a great job pulling you guys together, but it's, it's one of our top three goals this year. And so we would like to think that we're part of the dominos of great things that are happening. My questions are, Owen, I don't want to leave out Finley because I was going to bring my Finley doll in. My son has a Red Lab, too, so I always like seeing Finley. But I also think that it goes beyond safety. It goes to a lot of things in the district that are good things, that help teachers, parents, and help the, the community overall. So thank you very much for that. But my question is, state and federal funds. I want to be able to help you guys. I don't want funding to be an issue. However we can help, it's one thing, but if there are state and federal funds, I know that since Ivaldi, there was some funds that were federally directed and I want to be able to either get you grant writers or find a way to get you more money. I don't ever want to sit here and say, "We could've did more," because that means something bad happened already. I want to support you guys in anything you ask for and let's see how we can get it. I did have a question about cellphone policies and the difference between secure versus lockdown because a lot of people, when they think you're going to be securing the building for something that's happening outside.
Correct.
And lockdown is something that's happening inside. But a lot of people in the public might say the school's in a lockdown when it's really in secure mode.
Correct. During secure mode, you've defined it quite right. The problem is outside of the building and what's going on inside the building is business as usual. So people will be passing their classes, they'll be going to the nurse and doing all the normal things that, that happens inside of a school building. We just aren't letting anybody in or out at that time. So what would be disrupted is parents trying to come to the building and trying to get in. They won't be able, we won't be letting them in because we're secure. Kids trying to get out, well, we won't be letting them out right now. At the high school, if they were going to go to their job sites, that will be suspended for the moment. They'll be, and may be canceled while we sort out what's going on outside. A lockdown is a very different thing. We're dealing with a much higher-tier problem inside the building. So that's an important distinction and in the detailed training that we do for the staff and for the kids, it's, it's a couple, actually, there's a couple of slides that say, "Don't get confused between the two," because people do.
Is there anything we can do in regards to the cellphone policy to be consistent with both the principles and this plan? Is there anything we can do for you that we adopt a policy so that the parents, the teachers, everybody knows? We all know that our policy is that the cellphones can't be disruptive in the class.
Right.
But in the case of an emergency, it could be very helpful. So I'm wondering what your...
There are provisions in the plan for cellphone use by students at the right time. What we don't want is everybody getting their phone out from the, from the container and making phone calls immediately. We need certain things to happen right away and at a right, at the right time. We do want kids to contact their parents and send them texts that says, "I'm okay and I will let you know, I will be back to you in 10 minutes." And then have a controlled amount of information flowing for a couple of reasons. First of all, mad texting back and forth is going to jam up the circuits, which we're going to start using those circuits as part of our response and that could hinder our response. And all that activity could give away somebody's location. So we want to be really careful about these things. So yes, there's an opportunity for the cellphones to be used to communicate with parents in a, in a measured way so that we can reassure people that people are okay and that we can at some point give information about how we're going to reunite everyone.
Thank you so much. I really honestly believe, and I've said this for awhile, but with this, I can firmly say it. Not only do I think that we can be the local leaders that we already are, I think we can be the state leaders, I think we can be the national model and I hope, and I think that you could be the one to lead it, but I think all the players involved, we could be the place where people are using us as a national model on school safety. So that's what I'm striving for.
Thank you.
Marilyn.
So I'm a retired educator. So I remember the early days, the paper and pencil.
Yep.
And a colored marker or colored paper you throw under the door and, and all of that system. So what I learned from that and, or went, experienced with that, and we've had, I experienced active drills, is that students and teachers were not always sure when it was over and how to communicate it. There was like this logjam and then there was this code that, language that came over the intercom and we went, "Is that the right language?" So how do you address that? Is it unhold or do you have different sort of, "It's over now" messages depending upon the age or grade or?
Well, it depends on what, what mode we've gone into. So if we've gone into a hold or a secure, we just get on the P.A. system and say, "Okay, that's over now." And then we can go about our business. We could start moving about the building again in the hallways on a hold. And on a secure, we could have a controlled release where we're, you know, individually letting kids out or at some point we would have some sort of stand-down and we would communicate that. On a lockdown, on a lockdown, there's a different methodology that I'm not going to say into a microphone under a camera, but there is a different methodology and I would be surprised if you found somebody who didn't know what it was. So who, you know, one of our employees. I'm pretty sure that, because we've been doing it for years, we're not changing it just because the SRP does it the same way we've been doing it. if you found somebody who didn't know what it was. So who, you know, one of our employees. I'm pretty sure that, because we've been doing it for years, we're not changing it just because the SRP does it the same way we've been doing it. So no, no changes with any of that and I feel like it's fairly definitive, they know when it's over.
Thank you so much for the presentation. Can you tell me a little bit about how this works or doesn't work in some of our buildings? You know, we've got newer buildings, older buildings. Obviously, you know, I would hope that this building has some really up-to-date technology that works well for you in terms of getting messages out, keeping the, you know, the building secure, physically secure and things like that. The high school maybe also has some good stuff in place, but you know, we've got some older buildings. And so, you know, are there things in the works that we need to be concerned with in terms of changes, additions, repairs that need to be made to certain buildings to make this as effective as possible? And also, how do you sort of audit what's going on with these systems? How are you doing checks or how will you be doing checks throughout the year to make sure that staff remembers the training and is doing what they're supposed to be doing, that the buildings are remaining secure in the way they're supposed to? I know that those are a lot of questions, but...
Yes, they were. Let's see.
I'm known for my question.
So I'm, I'm going to say that we work very, very closely with district facilities. There are, some of our older buildings are challenging. There's, there's stuff that, that's broken and we're getting it fixed as quick as we can. That's true of every building, new, new and old. So if we're identifying shortcomings in the facility, in the physical plant, we're making note of those and we're doing the best we can to make the repairs effectively. So that's the physical plant stuff. The, the systems itself should be working regardless of the condition of the building as long as the doors lock and, you know, they close right. And as long as those things are working, the protocols should work fine. The question eight was...
Sort of auditing throughout the year?
So I'm glad you asked. Yeah, we, well, the, we are, this is the kind of thing that brings us closer with our friends at the fire service. Couple of staff changes, people are into this now. We say SRP like, oh yeah, we like that SRP thing. They have to do four fire drills a year and they like to do one of them as a lockdown drill, which is permissible by fire code. They have, can have one alternative drill and they get excited about doing that with us. When they come over to do a fire drill, we're, we consult with them to make sure that it's going the way it's supposed to go. So during the fire drills, there's an assessment phase and our discussions are to enhance that assessment to not just pull on the handle and putting a clock on how long it takes to get out and count how many windows people forgot to close. But we're being a position where they can go around and say, how many kids do you have? And that will be part of the drills moving forward once we get some of this technology up and running. In terms of lockdown stuff, we bring an army of people to the schools to do the, to do lockdown. So they're unannounced until we roll up as a, as a battalion of people. And then people go, oh, I guess today maybe. But it's before that they don't know. And so we, we will roll up as quietly and as secretly as we can and then we'll activate the system. And then we assign eight rooms and a common area to each team, which would include a police officer or the member of the fire service, fire inspector, and a school person and they'll assess it. How long did it take them to get it done? Is the door locked? Are the lights out? Can we find anybody? Are people safe? And we've got criteria that we brief them on to what to look for. And they write it down and we turn all that information over to the principal of the building to handle. So if there's some deficiencies, they are to, they address those in-house with their personnel. If there's attaboys, because we do have attaboys, they say, hey, atta boy, that was a great job on that. You did a nice job and we, we appreciate it. And then if we identify mechanical failures, that's a big part of it. Something was broken, something didn't work. And then we'll make a note of that and that heads over to facilities. And the facilities team sometimes accompanies us with the drills. It depends what they've got going on. They can't make every, make it every time, but they will get a copy of, hey, these are the broken things and work orders will be issued and the repairs will, will be made as best the repairs can be made. So those are the systems that we've had in place for a really long time. We have no intention of really changing any of that stuff because we're getting the information, I think, that we need to make sure that we're doing what we're supposed to do and we're fixing what's supposed to get fixed as best we can. Did I miss anything?
No, that was great. I just have one follow-up, which might actually be a little bit for Dr. Smith, which is, you know, when we have new students and new staff come in during the course of the year, is this training that you've already given to staff and students, is this given to, or how do we make sure that students and staff coming in throughout the year are given the same training?
So adoption of the SRP puts us, let me start with training because I did want to say about the training because that's an important thing. So we, we do an hour at every school before, generally before we open, but sometimes it takes place in a staff meeting right after. This year, we, we had to spread it out just a little bit. So the format that we've been following since Dr. Smith came in, we're visiting every school, we're doing an hour with everybody. As far as I can tell, it's, it's everybody. The lunch ladies and the, the secretaries and the paras, the, and the teachers and the administrators, at one time they get the hour. And we're all using the same, the same presentation. And we fan out across the district and we do a lap and that's how we're doing it. The SRP adoption is going to make it easier for us to get, say, substitutes and new staff will come in because we can, we can hand them the very succinct piece of paper that has the plan on it and we can, there's a, there's a seven-minute video that we're going to show to parents when we fan out this week and, and in the future to the PTO meetings and the PAC meetings. So they can see what, what the seven-minute student training video looks like, which is pretty on point. I mean, it's geared for kids, but it's, it's a, it gets you where we want to go. So it should make it easier for us to do the mid-season replacement training.
Dr. Smith?
Just a couple other things that I know Nick and I have talked about, which is specifically around the, the buildings, where we, and it is related to the school committee's goal that, you know, we, part of this whole bigger effort too is, is this is part of a plan that we have to sit down to and look, and it'll be part of the work that the safety team will do or a smaller subsection of that in relation to the work around capital planning as well, is to look at, to your point, like this building, state of the art, has everything in it it could possibly need. So like a simple thing to look at would be like cameras. So this building has, I don't even know the number, Sean, you could probably tell me, 400? Yeah, it's about 400 cameras in it, right? Ezra Baker has, I think, one. So, but, and I think Emmy Small and Station Ave are in basically the same boat. So then it's about, and then it's, and, and the high school has more cameras, but they're getting close to like end of life.
Right.
So, and then that's two different approaches where the high school, there's probably a couple of places we could use a couple more cameras. But a replacement process for cameras is different than not having any of the wiring or the backbone or the infrastructure for cameras. It's like you need to run all the wire, you need to have like this, I don't know, I'm kind of outside my lane here, but like, you know, probably need some servers and some pieces to actually get the whole system set up. So then we, you know, we had a very brief conversation on having an idea of like, what is the baseline of what an elementary school should have as far as cameras? Like where should we have them? Because each of those schools is laid out differently. But, you know, do we need, does the cafeteria, the playground, like what are the, the areas that should be covered? Because then, once we, the team determines what areas should be covered, then we, you know, working with David, we can then start to design an RFP that would get us a sense of what the scope of that, that, that's going to cost. And then we can start to put that into a capital plan. But it's starting to look about, around those things from a safety perspective because we agree as a team that those are things that should be in place and we shouldn't have to wait for a brand-new building in order to get there. And then just one additional piece around the audits. I know just, this is just a conversation I've had with, with the chiefs, which is around, and Nick did mention it somewhere there in his presentation around then doing some tabletop exercises. While we do drill around specific things, we don't really drill necessarily like a mass evacuation where we might have to move to another site. Eventually, might it be, I know other districts have done some either larger or smaller scale things where they've mimicked some version of that. Maybe we'll eventually get to that, but we can at least put the right people in a room and tabletop and exercise like that and talk through what it looked like. So those are places that the safety team will start to go and, because we do have to talk through things. Like if we did have to move kids off the Station Avenue because there was something, something that happened to one of the buildings where we had to evacuate it and it was such an event where you had to bring in all the public safety folks and Station Avenue was closed, so you couldn't bring parents here and we had to bring kids somewhere else, where would we go? Who would need to be involved? How would we do that logistically? How would we redo, do reunica, and it's not just the schools, right? We're going to have to involve police and fire, we might have to involve DPW, like, so who's going to be involved, how that's all going to work? So like talking through that before we find ourselves in that situation. It's very unlikely that we'll ever find ourselves in that situation, but I don't want to be figuring that out in the middle of it.
Thank you so much for presenting to us. It's, it's important to know what's going on and the changes. I know you love talking publicly and we, we love seeing you, we'll say that, so that's more important. But, you know, as many members have said, school safety is, is, is very important to us. It's, you know, making sure that, that kids don't have to worry about it and people know what the plan is, right? That's the most important.
Yes.
And that we have a plan, right?
Yep.
Because we know other places have not in the past.
That's right.
And we appreciate all the work that all of you have done, our, our partners in Dennis, our partners in Yarmouth, how you work together to make sure that our kids are safe so that, you know, they can worry about the most important thing, about learning and having fun, right? And keeping our, all of our students and staff, you know, staff's important too, safe every day. And, you know, I feel that, you know, you guys have a, a unique role in the, the building. Yes, you're a police officer, that's what, you know, your, your full-time job is, but you have a different job in the schools and you talked about the adopt, adopt-a-cops and the role they play in the students' everyday lives as a role model, as a leader, as someone they can confide in and feel safe to go to, right? A lot of things you talk about is people don't feel comfortable talking to police, especially kids. But having that opportunity to have someone that they know that is a police officer, that they can speak to if they felt they have it, is, is really important. So the, the relationships that, that all of you have built and continue to build really helps our community. So we appreciate you guys. Dr. Smith?
I just want to add one more thing, which is really just a shout-out to, to three gentlemen sitting here, plus Alex last year. I sat, I don't know, sometime early in my time, sitting, meeting with them last year. And a lot of the stuff that, you know, you see actualized here and stuff that will be coming sometime down the road, you know, they handed me a list of stuff, right? That they, that they had already analyzed, already had been on and you could sexually see stuff going back dates multiple years, right? So, you know, it's, it's, it's been thinking that's been going on for a long time. My job has really just been to use my position to pull the right people together and, I don't know, trying to think of a good metaphor, put a little wind behind the sails, use my position to put a little wind behind the sails. But even just like getting the, I love you guys part moving forward, you know, once I said yes, you know, they've really taken it and run with it. So I just want to make sure the appropriate credits go into the appropriate place.
Thank you. And I know we talked about the chiefs. I know both chiefs are fully supportive of what you guys are doing in the schools, all four, and the fire as well. I know that, you know, working together is important because we are one community, you know, even though there's a pond or a road or a bridge or something that separates us, but a river, there we go.
It's the river.
A river. You can see I'm not from here. Thank you.[1781.33]